Craig Paulson.
Here.
Mary Fay.
Here.
Tom Barnes.
Here.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay, first order of business would be to approve the June fourteenth carrying minutes which were emailed to you.
Motion.
Hey, Mary.
Second.
Craig, any discussion? Pretty simple minutes. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, those who carried, move right to the June fourteenth meeting minutes. Is there a motion on those?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Mark and Craig. Any discussion, any revisions, modifications? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, those who carried, is there any old business?
None.
Okay, new business then takes us to Allen's Wine and Liquor, site plan number one dash twenty-two at fourteen eleven West State Street. Vic, you want to walk us through what you got planned here?
Yeah, fully, just. Basically, a forty, forty by sixty warehouse, be right on the back of the liquor store. There won't be any change if you're looking from the front of the liquor store, but out behind the store, we'll have a nice storeroom. And then that'll allow us to widen out the aisles a little bit in the store. And help us with some square footage to improve our presentation a little bit in the, in the current. Base, so should, should allow us a little more freedom. You know, presentation and display wise on the retail end. And then on the buying end, it should allow us to buy some bigger volume when we need to. And not have to worry about where to set it, so.
Sounds reasonable. I just had a couple of questions on the project.
Yeah.
Let's see. Are you? Are you planning any lighting around the mandor on the new addition?
Yes, on the new addition, I'm gonna do, the overhangs on the building are gonna be, there's gonna be a little bit of overhang on both the front, the back, and then the sides. And there's gonna be LED, they're gonna be kinda in the overhang, so they're gonna be like LED downlighting, all.
When you say overhangs, you mean the soffits?
Soffits, yes, there's gonna be LED downlighting from the soffits. I'm actually gonna incorporate that in the current building and then it, it will match the addition, so at night it'll be really, really bright. And I'm actually looking forward to that.
Now, now, on the new addition, that'll be just on the west facing side, it won't be on the, the rear?
No, it'll, it'll be as well.
Be on the south facing side?
I'll probably talk to Mr. Douglas about that because it'll be going right across his fence, but I really would like to light it right up so that there's no dark spots. So.
The reason I ask that is, is that sometimes. Lighting can be a nuisance to a neighbor.
Yep.
They're trying to sleep and right next door, it's a, it's a really bright building.
Yep.
So, we, you know, we, we paid particular attention to that, we, we wanna make certain that what you build is not something which. Your, your neighbor won't like every night, you know? So, that's something that I'd, I'd like you to reach out to your neighbor back there and talk to him about. And, you know, if there's a way that he can participate in the public hearing that we'll probably schedule two weeks from tonight. And let us know his feelings about that, that'll go a long way to helping us decide what's an appropriate. Resolution of, of your, your plans to put lighting back there.
Yep.
That, that makes sense to you? You know, I understand your, your desire to put lighting all around the, the new addition, but. We just wanna make certain it's not a nuisance to your neighbors, that's all.
Yep.
I also wanted to ask, let's see. As has been pointed out, there, there's, there's no green space on this project. And, you know, the zoning ordinance does require ten percent of the acreage to be in green space. So, our understanding is that you're, you're proposing that planters be installed next to the building? Or somewhere on the site, I shouldn't say next to the building. Can you describe what your plans are for that?
Yeah, similar to what we did at the wellness store. And our current, our current green space is actually bushes and then like the pine ground cover. And it has some stone, so we could do more of that and also we could do. Where we plan on doing more of that, and then we also can do more planter boxes at the entrance, like around the entrance points.
Another option would be to put green space in that. Ten foot. Space between the back of your building and your, and your. And your neighbor, but you'd end up having to mow that if you did that.
Yeah, we could, we could ask him about it, I would, I would assume he would wanna stick with something that can, he can get in and out of his property easier. But I could ask him if you would prefer, you know, more green space or grass.
Well, I, I don't know that it's really up to your neighbor to, to decide that, it's, it's more your decision, what you wanted.
Gotcha.
I mean, it's, your neighbor's input on the lighting is important, but, you know, your decision as to what you wanna do for green space, you know, we're, we're just trying to make certain that. You know, we, we can get to that ten percent minimum if that's possible, and if not, we might have to go with the, the planters. So. Anybody else wanna weigh in on this issue?
Does, does he use the, that for access?
He does, he has an access point back there in the fence, there's a gate just behind his house, which is about in the center of. It's about in the center of our building, so.
So, I mean, he, he doesn't drive a motorized vehicle or anything, it's just for access?
Yeah, it's just a, just like a thirty inch wide gate approximately, so, you know, they just walk in and out of there, push the mower in and out of there. That sort of thing.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, is that that little section from where you see the fence and then the dumpster and then there's that little ten foot section as long as the sixty foot? Is that where we're talking? And then the guy's house is on the other side of that? Where we, where are you talking about the?
That's what I was talking about, I, I don't know if that's what you're talking about, Vic.
Um, I think you're talking about across the back of the fourteenth street lot, like the south side. Could be basically directly opposite our back door of the liquor store, I'm, I'm guessing that's where you mean.
Yeah, the sixty foot length. I guess it's.
Uh, yes, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so that's where he has access to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
I'll just say, I like the planters in front of the wellness store, I think that looks really nice, I think that would be a better allocation of green space than in the back of it. Just my opinion.
Okay. I, I would point out, in terms of the, the handicap parking. The site plan you've shown us shows the handicap parking spot in the loading area on the western corner of the front of your building. And. If you put big planters right next to the door, that's gonna be difficult for somebody, for example, in a wheelchair to get by. I, I would be, personally would be. Much more comfortable having that handicap parking spot in loading area right in the center of your building, right by the front doors. That way they could get in to the front better if those planters were installed there. And it shouldn't be a hardship for the non-handicapped, the non-disabled to, to walk in an additional ten feet to get into the door. If you were to, to move that, would that be something that you'd be willing to consider?
Um, I personally don't, our sidewalk, it's not on the drawing, but our sidewalk that goes across the front of the store is plenty wide enough. Um, I don't think it really matters either way, Ryan liked that layout there. Down on the corner, just so that the unloading zone had additional space. But I don't think it matters either way, really.
Well, you know, I always like to see handicap parking and loading spaces as close to a doorway as possible, you know, moving them. Let's see, like thirty feet away, seems like it's a non-necessary hardship, but I'm willing to go with whatever the board wants to do.
I mean, I would say if the access aisle is right in front of the door, that's almost the perfect place for it. For ease of access out of a handicap vehicle, as well as simply a, a walkway for other people to get out to their cars if they wanna go to the, straight to the trunk of their vehicle. You know, opens, it leaves the door wide open. For people coming in and out. And I don't know, if you're putting, you know, if you were putting planters, depending on the size of them, along that sidewalk. You know, it could become a problem depending on how far up people park. Whether you'd be able to get a wheelchair in between and around them, as Tom was saying.
Well, it's, it's worth considering, you know, we'll, we'll be revisiting this when we. When we take action on this, probably in a couple of weeks. So, I'd ask the board to consider that. I, I would also note that, you know, the reason for the ten foot setback in the, in the rear is for fire access. And I, I'm just curious, Kerry, have you had an opportunity to talk with anybody at the fire department to ask them if they have any issues with the. The fence and the dumpster going in there in terms of being able to snake a fire hose around the back there?
I haven't yet, I'll follow up on that tomorrow with either the code enforcement supervisor, Dave Bauer, and/or the fire chief. So, I'll have that answer well in advance prior to the public hearing.
Okay. And I would note, also, we do have. Both a letter from, from code enforcement. That looks at several issues. And it does indicate no nude signage, and we also have the comments by the departments. And it's hard for me to, to read that, Kerry, could you read that for us?
I sure can, yeah. There is only one comment received from the Department of Public Works, and it came from our former DPW director, Bob Bryn. That said the sidewalk has been paved over along South Fourteenth and State Street and should be converted to concrete sidewalk per code during this project or in the near future.
Vic, is that something that we could, we could include in the project? As long as you've got, you know, concrete trucks on the site?
Yeah, so when we're done with the actual building, there's gonna be some blacktop that's gonna need to be fixed. Off that'll be this year or the following year, but it'll, it'll, it'll happen, and I know Ryan mentioned that they want the smet sidewalks in. So, if that is the case, you know, for example, this summer after this project's done. It would probably make sense to just do it then, so, so it's definitely something I'm aware of, and it's definitely something we'll get taken care of in the next year or two, for sure.
Well, Kerry, can we flag that as a potential condition?
Yes.
And if we can't get it done during, during the construction of, of the addition, then maybe we can make that a, a condition that it would need to be done within a year of the, of the construction.
Okay.
And there was also, I know somewhere about the, about stormwater drainage, is that, that was one of my questions was. You know, when, when you put a new roof, it's going to funnel stormwater. In a different pattern than just having the, the back paved lot, I mean, it's the same amount of stormwater, it just goes in a different place. And my concern was on the east end, what happens to that, you know, that, that drops down on the north sloping. Part of, of the new lot, where does that go? And, but for the rest. It was, it was noted that the, that the lot is paved and sloped toward the. Stormwater catch basin, so I don't think we have an issue with that. So, I, I guess the only remaining issue then was what happens on the east side to the water that, that comes off the building? From the north sloping new roof that's gonna be built.
Uh, I can throw, I can, we actually, Kyle and I dug in, we're just talking about that, and the, the spaces in between the two buildings are gonna be repaved and, and funneled out of that area. And then they will, we possibly will be tying our gutters in with the stormwater system, which there's a storm drain. There is a storm drain just. It would be just northeast of that northeast corner of the addition, so it's not far away at all. So.
It's good that, that could also be a condition as well, Kerry.
Okay.
That's a nice solution, I like that, Vic, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Those, those were all the issues and questions that I had, so I, I'd like to open it up to the rest of the board. And I, I wanna, I see JR's on right now, you know, welcome, welcome aboard JR. And look forward to serving with you. Any, any other questions or comments from the, the balance of the board?
None for me.
Okay, well, Vic. As you're probably aware that, that we have to go through. The, the State Environmental Quality Review Act process, the SEACR process. And after that, we'll set a public hearing for two weeks from tonight. And we'll start out the meeting two weeks from now with the public hearing, and then we'll have the, the meeting thereafter, and we'll probably reach on your project at that point, okay? So. At this point, I would entertain a motion to declare the planning board lead agent for an uncoordinated SEACR review.
Move.
Second. Read seconded.
Who's second?
Reed.
Reed, okay, Craig and Reed, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Kerry. Kerry, do you wanna walk us through the, the short form?
Sure. Part one has the project information and sponsor information. So, going right into question one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance administrative rule of regulation? That's marked no. Two, does the proposed action require permit, approval, or funding from any other government agency that's marked yes? It lists the city of Olian for a building permit. Question three. The total acreage of the site of the proposed action is point five seven acres, the acreage to be physically disturbed is point zero six acres. And the total acreage controlled by the applicant or sponsor is point five seven acres. All the land uses that occur or are joining or near the proposed action were marked urban and commercial.
I think we can add residential to that.
I agree.
Question five is the proposed action, A, limited use under the zoning regulations, that's marked yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, that's marked yes. Question six is the proposed action consistent with a predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape, that's marked yes. Number seven is the site of the proposed action located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area, that's marked no. Question eight, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels, that's marked no. B, are public transportation services at or near the site of the proposed action, that's marked yes. Or any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action, that's marked yes. Nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements, that's marked yes. Number ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply, that's marked yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities, that's marked yes. Twelve, does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places where that has been determined by the commissioner of New York State Office of Parks and Rock and Historic Preservation? To be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places, that's marked no. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory, that's marked yes. Thirteen, does any portion of the site, the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? That's marked no. Would the proposed action physically alter and encroach into any existing wetland or water body, it's also marked no. Question fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site, urban has been checked.
I think we can add suburban to that.
It's been noted. Question fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government threatened or endangered? That's marked yes. As you'll see, the EAF map or summary report was attached, so it also has the raid, raid bean, the wavy raid lamp muscle, and the northern rifle shell. Question sixteen, is the project site located in the one hundred year flood plain, that's marked no. Seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources, that's marked yes. If yes, question A, will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties, that's marked no. Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems runoff or storm drains, that's marked yes. Question eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impalement of water or other liquids, that's marked no. Question nineteen, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility, that's marked no. Question twenty, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste, that's marked no.
Okay. And, you know, we note that, that the endangered species that were identified relate to. Species that are found in streams, so it's not relevant to our particular site. So, let's move right on to part two, the impact assessment that's been prepared by Kerry. And I would note that she's answered no or small impact may occur to any of those eleven questions. Give the board a minute or two to just scan through those and see if they raise any questions in your mind, or if you have any. Questions you'd like to ask Kerry about any of those. I, I should note, there was a question about archaeologically sensitive areas, and as we know, the entire city is on that, but here we have a, a site that's already been disturbed, it's already been paved over. So. You know, it's not likely that we're gonna have any impacts to. Archaeological sensitive resources. So, you've had a chance, is there anybody that had any questions on the eleven questions in part two?
No.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to part three then, determination of significance. I'm not hearing anything that needs me to believe that there'd be any significant adverse environmental impact, so unless anybody feels to the contrary. I would entertain a motion to make a finding that the project will not pose any significant adverse environmental impact. And accordingly, to authorize the issuance of a negative declaration on the project.
Motion accept negative declaration?
Read it off.
Okay, Mary and Reed, any, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It's Kerry, Kerry, could you sign my name to that, initial it for me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to make a finding that we have a completed application.
So moved.
Second.
Mark and Craig, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's Kerry. So. This will allow us to set a public hearing for two weeks from tonight. And what's that date, that's?
March fourteenth.
March, okay, so, Vic, does that work for you, March fourteenth at six thirty PM?
Yep.
Okay. Entertain a motion to set that public hearing date and time.
Motion.
Oh, good. Second.
Mary and Mark. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Kerry, will you walk Mark through what his obligations are in terms of notifying his neighbors?
Yes, so, Vic, either late tomorrow afternoon or by Wednesday morning, Kathy will be emailing you a public hearing packet. It'll contain a memory and outlining the next steps that'll occur. And it will include a public notice that you'll complete just with your name. Of the company, the address, and your proposed project, and it'll be sent to the radius of anyone that has a property within a two hundred and fifty foot radius of any border for your property. Similar to what you did next door with a wellness store. So, those letters will need to be postmarked by this Friday via regular USPS. And then there'll be a certification form that you'll sign and return to our office prior to the public hearing, just advising that you did send those notices to those property owners.
Okay.
And, and of course, the, the gentleman who has the property right on your southern property border. He, he is a key element, you know, that we wanna make certain that he's, he's happy with what you're doing, and especially the lighting, I think, and stormwater. So, if, if you could encourage him to attend, or, or at least provide us with, with some kind of. Input that would help guide our decision, that would much appreciated. You know, on, on the whole, though, this seems like a pretty straightforward project for us to review, so. We look forward to, to seeing you two weeks. we look forward to, uh, to seeing you two weeks from tonight. Okay?
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Nope. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thanks Vic, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, sounds good.
I know you gotta go. You're late to coaching. We'll see you next time.
Always.
Okay, thanks Vic.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's move on in our agenda. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous and communications.
Um, Tom, the only thing I have is just, uh, you know, welcoming JR to the board. I, I'd assume some are familiar with him. I've worked with him for many years. He serves as a volunteer member of the Olean Local Development Corporation as well.
Well, a- as I indicated earlier, welcome, welcome aboard JR. Look forward to serving with you. I, I guess I'd ask you that you, uh, familiarize yourself with, uh, the relevant sections of the city zoning ordinance that guide our, uh, what we do here at the planning board. Let's see, there's also, uh, a training requirement every year, planning board members have to have four hours of, uh, state mandated training, which you can get online nowadays. And there are some, uh, floating around some, uh, some, some written, uh, training materials. Uh, I think I might have some of them somewhere that I could, I could relay to Carrie too. To help, to help bring you up to speed a little bit. We haven't had much business here over the, you know, we haven't met since last June. So, and that's unusual for this board. But I think, you know, the, the pandemic is, uh, really curtailed the amount of building going on in the city. So I, I think maybe now that it seems like it's relaxing a little bit, we might have a little bit more activity. So, uh, there'll certainly be an opportunity for, uh, for us to get more actively involved as a board. Any, any comments or questions, JR?
Uh, no, just, you know, nice to meet everybody. Um, probably couldn't hear my head. I'm, you know, I got a couple sick kids here in the background, so.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. And I do have some of the stuff Carrie and Kathy have already sent to me. Over it. So.
It's good. Well, you know, my sense is that it always takes a, a member, a couple of board meetings to see what the, you know, how the board functions and, you know, what our established procedure is. Uh, you know, how we, how we move projects that come in front of us. So, uh, if, if along the way you've got any questions, uh, you know, feel free to speak up, you know, or, or you can always call any of us, including me. And Carrie will be a, a great resource for you as well. As you, as you move down the learning curve. Let's see, anything else? Are there any, uh, additional training sessions coming up that we want to publicize?
Um, we haven't been made aware of any. Uh, Kathy does her occasional research. Um, she'll seek out some trainings. Um, I know she hasn't had a chance yet in, uh, twenty twenty-two. However, we can mark that on our to-do list and, uh, update members on that.
I, I think Southern Tier West is planning, I think, uh, to do its, uh, local government conference training, uh, in May sometime. So there, there might be the, that might be one way for board members to get training if, if they don't do, uh, any additional training. Or DOS doesn't training or Allegheny County doesn't do training as they have in the past. So we'll keep it posted on that. Any other business before we?
Well, this is Gary. Um, one of the trainings that I took was, um, about zoning regulations, which I know falls under zoning, but some of the site plan review would fall under us for anyone applying for an Airbnb and changing residential areas because of that. And I wonder if we could be updated on what the zoning board is doing on that and how that is going to impact us. I just happened to find out here in Ward One, there was one of the bigger homes that has been an Airbnb for a year. So it, it definitely can impact the character of the, of the area. So I would.
Might be, it might be something that the council, they wish to weigh in on in terms of, uh, uh, revision to the zoning ordinance to accommodate that. And I, I would add not only just, uh, Airbnbs, but, uh, also, uh, uh, cannabis facilities.
Right. The, the training also included having additional rental property on private property on, say, in a residential area. So the training was very interesting to note what can easily happen without a lot of, uh, information to the boards that should have it. So be, it would be good to get updated on it.
I can provide, um, I mean, just a small update. I don't know if this would be an update. It's my understanding it was the former city attorney that was working on the Airbnb regulations. Um, and I do believe that was going to go before the common council for some sort of action. Um, I'll have to ask the mayor, um, or the current city attorney, uh, where we're at with that. And then I can update members at the next meeting.
During the training, someone from Ellicottville was very much involved in all of this. So it was really eye opening. I don't know if they could be helpful too.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
You might want to ask also about the cannabis facilities as well.
Yeah. And in particular, I'd say the lounges, if they're going to do those in addition to just sales, then you certainly want to regulate where those are located within the city.
Yeah, there are different types of facilities.
Right.
Dispensaries, there's lounges, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, and the city may want to have certain of those things permitted in certain locations and not permitted in others, et cetera.
Okay, I'll ask that as well.
Anything else?
I used to have one other question. I know we keep talking about downward lighting, et cetera, with the so-called environmentally friendly LED lights. Has anybody driven around Olean at night? The lights are blinding everywhere. So I don't know if that's a regulation. We even have any control over anymore. That includes city parking lots. It's commercial. Uh, I just feel like, you know, here we bind the people that do come to follow the regulations and site plan, yet it's everywhere, these bright, bright lights. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, or if we have to accept it.
Well, stuff which is already there, it's, it's kind of difficult to, uh, to do anything about. But if we do get another parking uh, lot or something like that, that's certainly something that we can, you know, condition. For example, I think the last one that we looked at was, uh, the expansion of Rick Blackman's parking lots. And we did condition that on downward shielded lines. So, I mean, we are, we are doing this for, for, for new construction, but it's difficult for us to go back.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Carrie, I interrupted you. Carrie, you were going to have something to say about that?
Um, I was just going to say another reason why it's so bright in the city is, um, the city works with National Grid. They opted in to do some program to convert all the streetlights to LED lights. So, um, that is quite shocking to be in your own residential neighborhood and feel like you're going to get a suntan at night.
And it, it really is. Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we next meet on the fourteenth. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Read.
Second.
Seems like you almost didn't want to leave.
I know.
Sign off.
Yeah. It's like a party. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Good to see everyone.
Thank you.